Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, October 17th, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order. We will now receive comments from the public, both oral and written regarding a zone classification change request for 43.0673 acres of land, more or less being a portion of a called 194.21 acre tract described as Tract A as conveyed to Yellowstone Hill Country Ranching, LLC along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard to change from single-family residential to multifamily residential garden home district. Aubrey, staff summary?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. It's the 43 acres of land. It is a straight rezoning request from the current single-family to the garden home district. The garden home district is an existing zoning category in the zoning ordinance. It allows six units per acre with lot widths of 60 feet, a minimum 60, whereas the single-family residential is minimum 90-foot lot widths. The general purpose and description of the garden home district is to provide multifamily low-density dwelling units having open space between units which exceed existing normal multifamily buildings with density not exceeding six units per acre. The intent of these regulations is to allow development of property which may have limited area suitable for residential development due to geographical limitations, have proportions of the property subject to flooding, or is located adjacent to a district of a different zoning designation and for which the development as garden home district would be appropriate as a buffer between incompatible land uses. So that's just the definition straight out of the zoning ordinance. And I believe the applicant is here to provide more information.
Do you want to do that now? You were suggesting do that now versus later?
Yeah, and then we can...
So is anybody here from the applicant that would like to speak?
My name is Adam Hill. We've developed, I live at 917 Sunset Drive, Friendswood, 46 years here. We'd started developing Friendswood Lakes, I'm sorry Sterling Creek, I guess in 2009 is when we began working on the project. We started with 90-foot lots. We've complied with that. We were instrumental in getting the Friendswood Lakes Boulevard extension. We've given hundreds of thousands of dollars to further the expansion. We've also put a million dollars of our money into the expansion, or what is already on the ground of the Boulevard. We're unsure of the expansion when we started this. Now we are. We've met with the city, engineering county, so we have tie-ins. So we are now able to master plan the balance of the land that we have for Sterling Creek. In looking at the guys before us, the market, 90-foot lots are very expensive. We are going to stay with the 90-foot lots in the next couple of sections. And then we have a tributary of South Eagle Creek in which we would like to do 60-foot lots which open us up to a variety of what we consider half-million-dollar homes. So we're able to provide our custom product that we've done for 22 years to a different price level rather than staying up in the 750 and up range that we're currently having to do. And then in the Section 6, which you can see, our vision is to do something of more of an age-guided section and where we may have some 50-year-old age and up, which seems to be of high demand of people that want to stay in Friendswood. They don't want all the maintenance. They don't want all the taxes. Again, probably looking at between 500 and 600,000. And so that is our goal for the master plan of what you see here. You'll see our percentages far exceed our predecessors. And that's what we're here to ask for.
Okay, thank you. Aubrey, you moved me out of order just a little bit, but no, it's okay. I've got to be flexible. But I would think we would take, do questions at the appropriate time when we get it to in the next section of the agenda. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So with that, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making this change? If there are, please step to the podium. So anybody else from the public that would like to speak against making this change? Please step to the podium? And if you would, state your name, please, when you get to the podium, please.
Evening.
Good evening.
Mike Anton. I'm one of the homes that backs up to probably three or four houses that back up to the property. And I had several questions. There's actually a creek that runs straight back from my house. Is that going to be filled in? How's that going to be managed? Is one of the questions I had about if they're going to be putting a bunch of homes. I'm worried about drainage, the density of the, you know, are we going to have six houses per acre versus, I don't know what the requirements are if they're 90-foot lots. We're going to have more homes. What are they going to do with the creek? I just had questions about how this was all going to be set up behind our house. That's one of those.
At this stage, I don't think there's anybody up here that can answer that question unless, Aubrey, you have answers?
The density of single-family residential is 2.7 units per acre, and for multifamily it's six units per acre. They will still, they will be required to provide detention for all the impervious cover that they are adding. So they will have to meet the requirements. Any existing creeks or drainage systems should not be affected. If anything, they would be improved.
And is there, are there setbacks, are there differences? Not setback, but the distance between the home and the back property line? Is there a difference between patio home and a single-family home?
Yeah, they are smaller lots, so the...
Is it appropriate for me to answer those questions?
The rear setback would be 20...
In a second, yes, maybe.
The rear setback would be 20 feet from the rear property line. And for single-family, it's 25.
Okay. Not much difference. So our main concern is just the density behind us. You know, we moved in, we have a three-acre lot there right now. Obviously, there's nothing behind us. There's actually a little lake there that I don't know what they're going to do with that, but probably have to go on the other side of it or fill it in. But we're concerned more about the density behind us, number of homes, noise mainly. And that's the bottom line. And I'm not quite sure, you know, right now, I don't know, is a patio home going to be stuck together? There are going to be a bunch of them. There are going to be a lot of... I like the idea of having more seniors than kids, obviously, but that's my main concern is just the number of people that are going to be behind us versus what was going to be twice as many per acre, it sounds like. I'm sorry? We're on San Miguel. So we directly, there's about four houses that this will directly abut. And they've already done homes that you can see from our house that are relatively close to our property line. I guess there's a 10-foot utility easement or something, and then the fences start. But we figured at some point they were going to be building houses back there, which was fine, but when I found out it was, I first thought it wasn't going to be apartments, but then I looked on your website and found out it was not apartments, which is great. But that's still twice as many people per acre. If it's 2.7 versus six homes, that's, the density's more noise, et cetera, et cetera. That's my concern. And where we are, we went there because it was bigger lots with less noise and fewer people. And then again, I know it's going to be developed, but my concern again is my backyard floods to a certain extent. And does it make a difference if there's patio homes versus other homes, more concrete per acre? Those are just questions I had more than anything else. Certainly, I'd rather it be single-family homes. And that's why I came tonight.
No, great. Thank you very much. Mr. Hill, if you have the answers to some of those that...
Setback.
Sorry?
You have the setback question, I think.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind standing back up if you would?
As I say, these are great questions, but they're more pertaining to planning and when it comes into actual development. So this is more a zoning issue tonight.
Well, let me explain it to you. So the setback you have, it's a 20-foot water line easement.
Adam.
If you could speak into the mic.
It's a 20-foot water line easement that you see now in our existing sections. So you're going to see the same setback. We will do single-family homes. The difference is they're going to have five-foot setbacks on either side. There's no multifamily happening. It's just going to be a little bit smaller lot, a little bit less setback, same as you see in West Ranch now. All of their homes are that way. As far as drainage, we have already been approved for inline drainage. So we're going to, that ditch that drains you now, you could step across. Now it's going to be completely developed and enhanced. If you drove to Dominion through Friendswood Lakes, which we did, I don't know, eight, nine years ago, you'll see it. So we're going to improve your drainage. Now, you have to get your water to that ditch. None of our water will ever impact you. When we went through Harvey, we didn't have water to our sidewalks. And that's because of elevation and drainage and regulation from our areas. So again, the distance will not be any different than what you see. I don't know where you are in what we're already doing.
We're right behind the creek.
You're right there. So it's going to get a lot wider. It's going to get defined. It's going to be a creek versus, I don't even know what it is now. You could step across it.
Excuse me, sir? We're trying to make sure that anybody that sees us on video will be able to hear you. And from where you're sitting, no one can hear you. If you understood the question, and I'm sorry for interrupting you, but I wanted to make sure everybody that sees this later will be able to hear.
Any feet from your property to our fence, 20 feet. What is existing amongst all your neighbors on San Miguel now will not be changed. And the difference in houses between the guys, I don't know exactly where you are, is one lot. It's one house. But they're all single-family homes. There will be no multifamily. They're just going to have a little bit different setback on the sides, not necessarily on the back.
But sir, if you would like to come up and ask any further questions, please. If you could state your name for us, please.
My name is Dr. Goberius. I'm in 2003 San Miguel Drive. I'm his neighbor. So, I mean, I've been in this neighborhood for almost 15, 18 years. And I purchased this based on safety, peace, quiet, tranquility, no neighbors behind me beside my three-and-a-half acres and so forth. So now I just have concerns of, I mean, what's your average price per homes? What's going to be there? Am I going to have a different clientele next to me? How far are you? Noises wise, et cetera. Drainage, like you explained, all of the above. I mean, that's my concern of this. Are we going to be altering the quality of my property after being in it in 15, 16 years? Or where do we stand? Well, I mean, what's your average homes prices per neighborhood? Are you going to be listing in there?
That's your main questions?
That's among the other questions.
So the setbacks will be similar as to what, it'll be exactly the same as what you have seen in our existing sections, which from your house is 300 or 400 feet. But from your property line, our fence will be 20 feet away, and then any structure would be 20 feet from that at a maximum. But our lots are deeper than most. And then our price point, we're hoping to get to a $500,000 price starting point. That is our goal. It's very difficult to do anything less than that and build the quality of custom homes that we build. And if you drive through, you'll see what we've done. In Friendswood Lakes, there was a garden home section we did in 2004, and we brought this then. Of course, that was a long time ago, but it's the same. You'll drive through there, you'll see our houses because they're stucco with taller doors, and they were custom then. But it is a goal that we can remove ourselves from a 700, or I say remove, we can offer additional options for our product from 700 and up to around 500 and 600. There's a lot of people that can afford that, not first-time buyers. These are second-time buyers in their 30s that can move up and want a more custom home than what you might be in fear of with a tract home builder, if that makes any sense.
Thank you for clarifying that very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? And I'll open up for or against this change? Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone from the public or committee liaisons that would like to speak at this No, this was really more of an open subject. But I really don't want to preclude comments, so if you have a general comment...
I'm Maggie Crofcheck.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
Yes, and I'm on San Miguel also.
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
My name's Maggie Crofcheck, and I'm also backing up to the homes. And I think my concern is that when we bought the property, and we've only been there four years, is we thought there would be single homes comparable to the price of our homes, which is, you know, a million plus, and we're worried about the resale value. If we have a lot of garden homes behind us, it's going to drop our resale value. And that's major because when we bought this, we bought it under the pretense of one thing, and now it's being changed. So that affects our resale value of our home.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, anyone else? Well, I, no, just checking. Next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner or citizen so requests, in which case the item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission September 26, 2019, regular meeting?
I'll motion.
And second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Next on our agenda are the action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item is a zone classification change request for 43.0673 acres of land, more or less being a portion of a called 194.21 acre tract described as Tract A as conveyed to Yellowstone Hill Country Ranching, LLC along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard to change from a single-family residential to multifamily residential garden home district. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Aubrey, just checking, is there any additional information that you'd like to present?
I did want to add, the zoning district also, this particular zoning district regulates the living area of the homes. So the first floor of any two-story structure that's built in here has to be at least 60% of the total living area, and not more than 40% of the total living area can be on the second floor. So the first floor has to be a minimum of 60% of the living area, and second floor it's 40% max.
Sounds redundant, but okay.
It's a little confusing how it's written, but just wanted to point that out as well.
Okay. Mr. Hill, I'll give you one more chance if you have anything else that you would like to add.
Did we hand out all the flyers? Okay. Just to answer her question, she's got, if we're talking about the garden home district, she's got a water line easement, and then she's got a 60 or 70-foot drainage easement to our fences. And I don't know that they've seen this illustration because it's relatively new, but it may give her a comfort level of how far away we are from her property. But I brought all I could.
I assume that we're going to have a question or two for you. If you could remain standing just for a moment longer.
Sure.
Right.
Adam, you said your price point would be starting at 500,000, that's your thinking?
That's our target.
So right between 500 and 600?
The lots will be 100,000. So it's typically 20% of what the total value of your home is.
And then you're going to carry the same architectural standards you have in your previous, you build great buildings, so you're going to continue that into these garden...
We hope to improve.
Okay. What's the, have any idea on the square footage of the garden homes yet? Have you gotten that far?
You know, we think that we're going to be at, we're going to have a minimum, we hope of, around 3,000 feet. But we'll be able to do the 60/40 and probably get up to 4,000, 4,200 feet pretty easily.
Will any garden home sections be gated, or is it going to be just...
The Section 6, the Section 6 where it ties into Sandy Lake will be gated. The garden section will not, Section 7 will not be gated. But we will finish the main Sterling Creek as gated. And there is a glare ordinance that we would not offend any neighbors behind us.
Got you. Okay. I'll go ahead and give my comments on this development. You know, when you go onto a different type of residential development in Friendswood, different from 90-foot lots, whether you're rezoning to garden homes or multifamily or townhomes, you kind of got to treat it as a PUD. You've got to be taking it on a case-by-case basis. I think that's what we need to do in Friendswood. So we have to look at this on a case-by-case basis. I'm for this development because garden homes are needed in Friendswood. The housing market's going through a dramatic change right now. I've experienced that myself. I'm on the multifamily side of things, and there's a lot of people downsizing in our community, big time. And they need options. When you maintain that balance, we got a lot of longtime Friendswoodians who want to downsize, and there's nowhere for them to go. So they either got to leave their hometown or stay in their big house. So, but this is something we do have to take on a case-by-case basis, and we always got to focus on the build-out. We're going to eventually hit build-out in about 15 years. And we always got to focus on that 80/20, 80% residential, 20% commercial. But you also got to focus on the 80% makes you a good balance there. So you've got good housing for everyone. We need a good product for 90-foot lots and 90-foot homes, but you also need a little bit of multifamily, garden homes, townhomes. 90-foot lots are not a one-size-fits-all. There's meaning in our community who want other options. So I'm for this development for those reasons.
Yeah, I, my view is a little different. When I look at the intent behind the garden homes district, my belief is that it's meant to be, you start with the downtown area, you have multifamily close by so people can walk to the downtown district and such. You get further out, you go into garden homes, you go further out, you go into houses, and you go further out, and you go into large ranches. And so the intent of the garden home is intended to have more density close to where everybody wants to walk around and can get around to. This is kind of against that. It kind of is in the middle of a whole single-family area. I am somewhat sympathetic to the residences that bought with the idea that they'd be in a single-family residential neighborhood, and so I intend to oppose this.
Mark, I'll start with you. Any questions?
So in the handout that you gave us, just explain the percentage of total lots. So you're moving from 65% to 35%? Just walk me through that really quick.
Well, the entire project was 65% 90-foot lots, 35% would be the 60s, and y'all have had countless predecessors that you voted for that were far less than what we've offered here today.
Sure. Okay, so the proposal that, are these, the numbers that you have in here, the 65/35 split, is that with the proposal? That's with the proposed garden district?
Yeah, that's the total Sterling Creek subdivision, if I mention that.
With Section 6 and 7?
Yes, sir. That's total build-out.
So knowing, knowing what you know today, if you can go back when you started this, would this have been your approach? I mean, when I step back and look at the total graphic that you gave us, it looks very similar, and I'm agreeing with you from that perspective. It looks very similar to some of the developments we've recently approved under PUDs. So I'm not sure if you had that perspective, obviously, when you started, but just give me insight.
I've learned, I've learned that I don't know what I didn't know.
Sure.
But I will tell you, when we started in Section 1, our target price range was $550,000. We've evolved with cost to get to a point that if you have a 90-foot lot, if you call me on the phone, we start at 700,000. We have people that call us daily that say, "We love Friendswood. We want to live in Friendswood." I love Friendswood. Been here forever. And I can't, they say, "We love your houses. Can you give me an option? I don't need 5,000 feet." But when you have a price point, like I said, at 20% of your lot, when they're 90-foot, it's curb feet. So this is a, did I see this vision? You know, I just know I'm here now.
Right.
And like you say, the guys that you guys have voted for before, they're way smarter than we are as far as vision and knowing where we're going. So we just want the same respect.
Okay. I understand that. So I guess the next couple of questions that I have might really be for you, Aubrey. So the ordinance that we look at now for garden home district, you also gave us some other communities that we have that are already slated. Autumn Creek is an example of that.
Mm-hmm.
Does this ordinance that we're looking at now, do you know if that was, if those developments were approved under this ordinance?
Yeah, the residential regulation, the zoning districts that are in there have been in there for, probably since the ordinance was written back in the early 80s.
All right. Let me run through my notes here. I guess, Adam, last one I have, so why not a planned unit development for this now? Just because there's no deviation, or what's the reason?
This seemed to fit what we were going to do versus a PUD. I mean, I would deal to the city and say, "This was our goal. Look, we want to do a little bit smaller lot. We want a little bit smaller setbacks. We are staying single-family." I read that and see multifamily, and it would throw flags up for me. This seemed to fit our goal, while the language within the city does, may not reflect that, but this seemed to fit our goal.
Okay. That's helpful. So here's what I think is my last question. If he would have come in with a brand-new development, Section 1 through Section 7, that had garden homes as part of the application or site plan, would that be, would that be more applicable to a PUD in that case? Would we have used the PUD?
Typically, the PUDs are, if you're, like, for private streets, if you're going to have rec centers, if you're going to have, you know, your open space amenities, trails, you have, you know, you're going to capitalize on, you know, you have areas of the property that may not be developable due to floodplain or something, and so, you know, that's undevelopable, so we give higher density in other parts of the property. So there are, they're basically, it's a give and take with PUDs. There's, you know, there's difficulties with the property, and so, you know, they offer different amenities.
All right. Can you walk us through some of those amenities then for the...
Well, first of all, amenities, and I've been to a lot of meetings and taken notes of what council and what you guys have said, but all of our amenities are accessible by everybody. There's nobody locked out from anything as far as walking around and the fountains and that sort of thing. The hardships that we may have, if you look at Section 7, I guess you're going to call it the south side, we have a transmission line. It's a major transmission line. That's a hardship by any stretch of the imagination. If I'm going to get $750,000, that's going to be a problem. We've got to get to a little lower price point, and that's not a premium lot for us. But that is a major hardship for us. Other than that, everything we have is accessible to everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where is your transmission line? Where does it run?
If you look at Section 7 and consider this north-south, it's right there. And you can kind of see in the green space that goes to San Joaquin, it runs behind probably some of the owners here, their property, and it runs all the way to Webster. It feeds the junior high. But it is a major transmission line. These are not light poles. These are huge, huge poles.
If we're looking at the map, is it like on the left or the right or the bottom?
If you're looking, it's at the bottom.
Between you and Avalon?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So we have, on this board, accepted PUDs that did have the smaller lots.
Right.
But their overall density was still less than the actual, what a 90-foot lot would be. So when you looked at the whole density of what they were doing, and so it doesn't quite meet the intention that we have done before.
So if you look at overall, our entire acreage and density, we have two homes per acre. So I think that we far exceed anything else you've approved.
For all of Sterling Creek?
Yes, ma'am. It's actually...
Sections one through seven?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we're, we, we, we annihilate anything else you've approved.
But this particular section, section seven, what amenities do you see that they have available to them?
They're gonna have green trails all the way around that they can walk on and, and travel. And there will be, you know, um, as far as amenities, they can, they can walk in.
So, this whole green space area around it has walking trails?
There's no walking trails. There's actually limits to walking trails, which you can do upon drainage. They, they like to talk about it, but if it's a, uh, Galveston County Drainage, you're, you're not allowed to put walking trails on things that could impede them, even though we maintain them. That's a rule, but they can't walk along them. They are maintained.
Okay, maybe I didn't understand what you said about, about their amenities. Maybe if you start again. I thought you said that they had access to walking.
They have access to walking around it. There will not be a formal walking trail due to regulation by the Galveston County Drainage District.
So, no park areas, no?
Uh, there's no designated park areas, there's green spaces, much like Avalon has green spaces. They're not park, uh, park, they're not putting amenities there, but there are green spaces in which if you wanted to throw a frisbee or throw your dog a ball, those spaces will be there. Got a new dog park here, which is very nice.
All right, that's our questions.
Dick?
Adam or Aubrey, I, I don't know, could, could you compare, um, the vision for section seven against another garden home district I might be familiar with? Like, uh, West Ranch or i- is it, are those sixty-foot lots in that West Ranch section, behind the junior high school?
So, the, yeah, uh, behind the junior high, like, if you're going into West Boulevard, uh, the very first section on the right
Okay.
is a garden home section for West Ranch.
Those are sixty-foot?
Mm-hmm.
And if you look at what y'all approved for Avalon, twenty-five percent of their lots were, uh, sixty-foot, and then fifty-two were seventy-foot, only twenty-three were ninety-foot, were, were at sixty-five. And we also do pay six hundred dollars a lot for parks fee on every permit. So, we, we do contribute to parks fees for the city.
What's the, um, remind me about, about the, the plans and the timing for the expansion of, uh, the Boulevard?
Uh, Friendswood Lakes Boulevard is currently under design. Um, Galveston County Engineering Division is overseeing that project. We're hoping eighteen months to two years, um, before completion.
Okay, and Adam, that, that affects you, uh, with opening access to the section seven and, I guess, six, is that right?
Yes, sir. In fact, uh, I'll repeat that we did, we had the option of coming in through Friendswood Lakes and, uh, developing our subdivision, which was the previous developer's plan. And we elected to spend a million dollars out of our pocket. Keep in mind, West Ranch got nineteen million dollars of mud money, we did not. But we did that for the sake of the community in harmony. And then we donated land, uh, of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash to get this road done. But I'm hoping they start January one. They've been saying eighteen months to two years for about three years, so, um, or we, we can do nothing without our road. So, that, that is, that, that is, that is for us and Avalon and everybody, we need our road to go.
Thank you.
Just a couple more then. Oh, oh, no, please.
Adam, it's no secret that you've been an ardent proponent for ninety-foot lots. Can you expound on why economically you're changing your tune on that?
There is no secret. You know, I, I think somewhat with just the economy and with what things cost. And I felt like when we did ninety-foot lots and I loved them, that if I could stay with, with, it doesn't have to be a first-time homeowner. But, but these guys in their thirties, they, they can buy five hundred, six hundred thousand dollar houses. But we've evolved to, to seven. And, you know, I mean, I get calls every day, "Man, what do you got between five and six hundred thousand?" "I have nothing," every day. I mean, it's ten to one. Man, I love Friendswood, wanna be here. And, and so, that forces us. And then watching these other guys come before us and, and know more than us, they've got big companies, you know? We've built, I've built six hundred homes in this city, lived here my whole life, you know? And the people we build for typically come to us, they're, they're, they're Friendswood people. They're people that know us and wanna build a custom home with us. And, uh, it's tough to tell them no. And, uh, you know, even my own family says, "Look, man, I, you know, I need a new house, but I can't afford the taxes." So, that's why, you know, I said, "Well, let's, let's do a small section of twelve lots and get some guys that wanna stay here, that, uh, they can have a nice house on a small lot." So, it's just about trying to compete with, with the guys that are coming and then trying to provide for the people that want our product.
Got you, that, that's the point I was trying to make. The economics of housing, the, the housing trends are going through a dramatic change. We've seen it big time on our side. And Friendswood is aging much faster than Pearland, Alvin, and Lake City. Our average age, median age now is forty-two point two. Our neighboring cities are in, in the mid-thirties. So, we're average, our age is going up much faster than our other cities. And there's some good reasons why that's occurring, but it also demonstrates that we gotta provide some product for our aging citizens and, uh, or they gotta leave their hometown. And so, that's why I said we got to take this on a very much case-by-case basis. I'm definitely not promoting, promoting going for all garden homes, but we need to allow some of them. So, 'cause, 'cause the market's demanding it. And if we don't provide it, they're gonna go elsewhere and we're gonna lose some good citizens.
Right, and then I was told by a building official in the, in the month of August, I think there were four building permits issued. We were two of them. And it's just a matter of the impact fees and providing for the city and the schools. And, and we need people, and I understand, I didn't want fifty thousand, but we did a study, think, uh, two thousand eight or nine, we were gonna hit it. So, um, West Ranch is done. So, if, if we don't get some help, uh, you know, we're gonna be looking at some lots and, and being, picking from, from a very small pond. And, and I think that five hundred thousand, I, I believe the number's three hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty thousand that the city needs to break even.
Right.
Well, we're, we're well exceeding that. And, and in our sections, uh, I think the houses we have on the ground are somewhere about sixty million dollars. If you look at this garden section, uh, and you do half a million, um, half a million lots on a hundred and six, you know? I mean, it's fifty million dollars worth of tax base, impact fees, uh, sales tax, you know, it's, it's good for the city. And we will build great houses, I've done that from day one. Uh, we do not build anything but a, a quality home. And, uh, you know, I'd appreciate some help on this, that we can compete with some of these big guys that drive in from out of town.
Well, there's some significant downsizing going on in Friendswood. And, uh, a lot of people are hitting their sixties and seventies and they're, they're, they're downsizing their homes. And so, they want a product like this. On the flip side, that opens up a home for maybe a younger family to step into. So, that's why I'm for this.
Thank you.
I have nothing else.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, um, I'm wondering if, if you're open to compromise, your neighbor's right behind you. Uh, you already have fairly large lots right there at the corner. If what they can experience from their side of the fence is that the lots that, uh, back right up to them are a little bigger, would that meet everybody's concerns, both on the San Miguel side and the?
You know, that's certainly, we can look at it. I think that I, I just, with my pen counted them, I think it was one, one more lot. The, the lots on the cul-de-sacs are obviously bigger.
Right, right there at the corners. So, those are already large lots.
They're already large lots.
You've just got three right there.
We're further away from them than anything else we've developed. Because they have a big drainage easement, that, that drainage dish that they have behind San Joaquin, it drains a lot of water. And we're only gonna help that, but that does create a, a large green belt between us.
Would you like, I'm sorry?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm losing control, complete control. If I had it, if I had it, I lost it. Adam, if I could, if I could get you back for a second? That's all right, no, 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 it, no, it's, it's quite all right. Okay, so, I, I guess you're, you're down, down to Mary Kay?
I haven't said anything yet, but I will. It's on. I just wanna make sure that everybody is focusing on the zoning issue, the land use issue. The other part comes later, but focus on the land use.
That's fair, thank you. Thanks for reminding us. Okay.
No problem.
So, not to belabor the point, but I just wanna make, 'cause it's critical, I think, to this decision. Remind me again what your comment was of why exactly you're requesting the garden home zoning versus, versus the ninety-foot standard lot?
So, if you look at Sterling Creek where we started and the road now coming through, so now we know where we can get curb cuts and what makes sense. So, we're going to finish ninety-foot lots until we get to South Eagle Creek. But when we get beyond that, we have a distribution power line. That is not a power pole, it is a distribution power line. And it allows us to say, "Okay, we've got a hardship already with this, this line and this body, and now we can take these lots." We've been approved for in-lined attention on the tributary that we have to widen. And then we can look at a, a half a million dollar product that would probably be very difficult to sell seven fifty and up next to a power line.
Okay. Okay, so, that's your, that's your thinking. 'Cause Aubrey read earlier, and I looked it up, and I'm sure we all did, it's under the intent of garden home zoning. And, you know, one was development for residential that has geographical limitations. You're, you're, are you kinda saying that you think the power line's a geographical limitation?
Right, and if I could describe this power line to you, it's not just a power line, it's, I mean, it's a massive transmission line. It is not a power pole that you might see running down Friendswood Drive.
I'm, I'm familiar with it, but I understand exactly what you're saying. Okay, and then the, the second is portions of the property is subject to flooding, we didn't think that was gonna be an issue here. And then, to me, buffer between differing zoning designations that would be incompatible land uses. And, and so, Aubrey was kind enough to help us get prepared for this meeting, to send us all the, uh, garden home applicant, zoning sections in, in Friendswood. And they all really met a lot of those requirements, some more than one, but specifically, especially the one about, uh, differing, uh, incompatible uses like community shopping. Then, right next to it was a, was a garden home, was a buffer to single-family residential. You're completely surrounded by either a planned unit development or a single-family residential all around you. There's no, there's no commercial, you're not, uh, that, so that one doesn't apply. I hear you about the power line, but there's lots of power, and I, I get it's, it's probably a one thirty-eight KB transmission line. But I get that, but it's not on your property, it's, it's a
What is?
It's a, well, it's a visual impediment, it's an easement you can't build on anyway.
But we do own it.
Okay, but, okay, but they have an easement and you can't build on it. But it, but it is a visual, I mean, who wants to have a, spend the kind of money you're talking about? And by the way, I said, I should've said it at the very beginning, you build great homes. I've never seen one that, that wasn't just really nice.
Thank you.
So, it's not about that. I'm just concerned that what you're asking for and that's this designation doesn't meet kind of the intent of, of garden homes. I, and if we need to, you know, maybe it's, it's another forum to address, uh, maybe we need to change what the, the requirements for garden homes. But as they stand now, I see your point about the power line, I don't know that it, it sways me, I, I just don't think you meet these requirements.
So, if I came with a PUD, it's the same thing?
Well, but see, when you do, yes, but in a PUD, you, or a planned unit development for everybody else, uh, then you would have, you'd have certain other requirements. It comes with requirements as well, amenities, common, you know, I get that. And, and you've said earlier, well, we've, we've also turned down several planned unit developments. City Council has seen it differently and, and gone on forward with some of those, but not all those have passed us. Because again, we're, we're looking at, at implementing the rules, you know, the technical side of this. And, and so, I'm looking at this technically and I'm not sure that you meet the requirements that even the other garden homes around Friendswood meet. That's my, that's my concern, so.
So, we, we went back to the city and said, "We wanna go as a PUD," and we counted all of our lakes and parks and, and we complied that way, we would have a favorable decision.
You, you have a, you're, you're posing a hypothetical, there's, there's no way I can, you know, if that's what you think is in your best interest to do, then you'd have to go do that and we'd see where that fell out. I, I can't say, you know that. I can't say.
I felt like we were advised that this was the best use, but I, I know that we, I know that we provide more than the people before us. If it's a, if it's a zoning concern, if it's what we chose here, then, then of course, we could go back and revisit. But we have lots of green spaces, we have lots of fountains and parks and, and places to walk more than, than they do.
Okay, okay, I, I'm not gonna debate, debate that with you, but I see your point.
So, I have a question to that. Um, and I have not driven through Sterling Creek, but aren't you gated for most of the, of the subdivision? But the section seven is not included in that gated?
It's not gated, just for the logistics of how often it would have to open and close and the maintenance. You know, you can, you can gate, if you have a couple interests and one gate goes out, you know, you can use the other. But with, with, with that small of an area, it doesn't seem to be worthwhile to gate that section.
Right, section seven. So, when you talk about, uh, these garden homes having access to the green space and amenities of the rest of it, isn't the rest of the subdivision gated off?
It is gated, it's got walk gates and they would have, they're part of the HOA, so they would have codes to get into the walk gates and, and visit the amenities.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank, thank you so much for, for being kind enough to answer all of our questions. So, we have a motion and a second? All in favor? All opposed?
Flip a coin?
Doesn't.
So, this is a recommendation to City Council, so it'll be a negative recommendation. It takes four positive votes by the commission to approve it. So, we will forward, uh, the recommendation to City Council. It will be on the November fourth agenda for public hearing and consideration by City Council.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I excuse myself, my son's singing the choir FISD?
Absolutely.
All righty, thank you. Go Strohs.
Okay, our next agenda topic is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission meeting dates. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. Uh, our next regular meeting was scheduled to be next Thursday, October twenty-fourth. We do not have any agenda items for that meeting, not be having the regular meeting on the twenty-fourth. Our next regular meeting after that would be Thursday, November fourteenth. And then our second meeting in November is actually on Thanksgiving Day, so we won't be having that one.
Brought us here tonight.
It's baseball day. So, we can discuss the meeting, that meeting on the fourteenth and decide if, if we have any agenda items, we can maybe determine a special meeting date at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Not meeting the twenty-fourth, uh, next meeting is the fourteenth of November.
Okay, next on our agenda is communications, any, and I'll start with the, uh, update on the ordinance subcommittee. If there is one.
Yeah, we had a meeting, uh, Becky got us organized. We had, uh, the three of us, Mark and Dick and I. She put a list together of the things on our to-do list, there's eleven items on our to-do list, and thankfully, she crossed off four, which means we're making progress. So, we have seven left, um, and we worked four of them. We looked over the zoning map, uh, made a few minor things that were missed, but, um, that looks like it's gonna be coming forward to the next meeting, uh, for approval by this, this body. We, uh, she had, with, along with Mary Kay, had written up some good stuff on the side We, she had, with, along with Mary Kay, had written up some good stuff on the sidewalks in established neighborhoods, trying to get that issue moving forward. And I'll try as we might to improve the wording, we weren't able to. And so, we, we nitpick it, but we didn't change it or recommend to change it. The last thing was the House Bill, building material changes. Generally, their approach had been to change the word "shall" to "are encouraged to" for some of the now optional, option, items that were formally required or, or we, that we could forbid or, or require in, in the downtown district. I know Mark had been concerned about some of the wording on that. Are you, are you okay with that now, Mark, or...
Well, won't we debate it at the...
Okay. We'll debate it later.
Yeah, we'll just bring it up there and then she can tell me I'm wrong.
But I, I sense, and Becky, correct me if I'm wrong, that we'll be bringing up those three items at the next, at the next meeting, at the next planning and zoning meeting.
Yes. We'll bring it to the full commission, and once we get a consensus there, then we'll schedule, depending on the item, hearings and readings with City Council.
Okay. And is there any reason to have another of our subcommittee meetings before that, or should we push these three through and, and, and call some progress on that before we start tackling more of our 11?
I, I think we're okay right now. Let's try and sew these up a little bit. I sent y'all some emails, so we'll kind of just bounce back and forth on that and hopefully get it to the full commission.
Good. I, I kind of grabbed the bully pulpit here. Dick, did I miss anything out? Mark?
No. Okay.
Okay. Brett's not here, but is there any update, any, anything to pass along on the planning subcommittee?
I sent out an email today to Lisa and Eric to possibly have a meeting next week. We are trying to get something scheduled so we can start working on the comp plan.
So, I'll open it up to, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to communicate, suggestions for future meetings, agenda items, general comments, updates from Lisa on assignments? Mark, I'll start with you. I'm okay, thanks. I have nothing to report. Lisa? Good. Rich, anything else? Dick?
Been invited to a ZBOA thing on Tuesday, so that'll be the first time I've been there for a while. We haven't had any meetings, so I'll check in with you next time and see what happens.
Perfect. And I, I have nothing, so... Ms. Hanks? Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Thanks for all of your work. Just want to congratulate Aubrey and the staff, Becky and Karen Capps, for that Scenic City Award. We, there were several of us in San Diego.
Yeah, good job. You're right.
City, great job. Great job.